Good evening. Welcome to the November 18th meeting of Troy City Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mrs. Robin Oda. Please stand.
Lord, as we gather here tonight, we are grateful for our freedoms and for those who have fought for those freedoms. We're very grateful for our community that we have to live in, and what a pleasure it is to live here. As we approach each item on the agenda tonight, I pray that you give us wisdom and discernment, and we pray for the peace and well-being of our citizens here at home and those that are not with us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Tonight, we have a public hearing on ordinance O-22, 2013. Mrs. Knight, please read this title of the ordinance.
Ordinance Vacating an Unimproved Public Alley Between West Ross Street and Southview Avenue Extending Between Amelia Avenue and South Market Street in the City of Troy, Ohio. This is ordinance number O-22, 2013.
Okay, and now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the ordinance? Seeing none, then, I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes from the November 4th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, November 4, 2013. Committee reports. Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing intergovernmental agreement between Dayton, Troy, and Middletown related to obtaining lime for the water plant and the cleaning of the lime sludge residual. Law and ordinance committee gave a report regarding notice of a liquor license that was received from the state. Resolution number R-43, 2013, agreement with Myoma County Public Defenders Commission for 2014, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-44, 2013, enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Dayton and Middletown related to lime purchase, was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-22, 2013, vacating an unimproved public alley between West Ross Street and Southview Avenue, first reading. Following comments, council adjourned at 7:13.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll move on to committee reports. We have several committee reports this evening. We'll begin with the Building Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President. On November 13th, the committee consisting of Councilwoman Oda and myself met to consider a preliminary consent legislation providing the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding their plan to perform bridges on the Market Street Bridge during fiscal year 2016. This is a project that will be at no cost to the city. After the presentation by staff, we did recommend adopting and preparing this legislation, and it is an emergency, and we did not object to that. So we would submit that to the council for a vote on behalf of Mr. Kendall, Mrs. Oda, and myself as chairman.
Are there any questions from council on this report? Thank you, Bobby. Our next reports are from the Finance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. First report has to do with the downtown building repair revolving loan for PNC Ventures to East Main Street. On November 14th, the committee met to consider the recommendation from the Downtown Loan Committee where council approved of a new $37,675 loan from the Downtown Building Repair Revolving Loan Fund, or known as the DBR, to PNC Ventures LLC for funds for the roof replacement of the building at 2 East Main Street. The terms would include 3% simple annual interest and a 10-year payment term, repayment term, with the loan secured by a second mortgage on the building. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared for a loan from the DBR fund in the amount of $37,675 to PNC Ventures LLC, as recommended by the Downtown Loan Committee, so that the loan can be closed and the roof repairs made as soon as possible. We support emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council on this report? You may continue, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you. The second one also is from the DBR loan subordination for Four Sons Development LLC for 114-116 South Market Street. On November 14th, this committee met to consider a request for subordination of the Downtown Building Repair Revolving Loan Fund, DBR mortgage for Four Sons Development LLC, Wade Westfall, to Unity National Bank for the property at 114-116 South Market Street. The DBR loan was for the purchase of the property. The owner is obtaining a loan from Unity National Bank to make interior modifications to the property so that the property can be rented. With the city taking a second position on the mortgage with the subordination, the city's loan will be adequately secured. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the subordination of the mortgage for the DBR loan previously made to Four Sons Development LLC to Unity National Bank associated with the property at 114 to 116 South Market Street. We support emergency legislation so that the bank loan can be closed as soon as possible to fund interior modifications. And this, too, is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself.
Are there any questions from council on this report? Do you have anything further, Mr. Kendall?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we have Personnel Committee reports and Chairman, Mr. Alan Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. The subject of our committee meeting was adjustment to part-time seasonal wage scale to meet minimum wage law. Committee members Snee and Clark met on November 11th regarding adjusting the starting wage rates for part-time and seasonal workers by 10 cents an hour to be consistent with the new Ohio minimum wage law of $7.95 per hour effective January 1st, 2014. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared amending the rate for seasonal employees, temporary laborers, and temporary clerks to reflect a starting hourly wage for all new hires of $7.95 an hour to comply with the Ohio minimum wage as required. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Phillips, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chairman.
Does anyone on council have any questions on this report? Do you have anything further, Mr. Clark?
We have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairperson, Mrs. Robin Oda has the Recreation and Parks Committee report this evening.
Thank you. This committee met on November 11th to consider recommending a professional services agreement with Crossroads Consulting Services of Tampa, Florida, to perform the Hobart Arena feasibility study at a cost not to exceed $75,000. I'm reading the wrong thing, aren't I? Funds for such study were included in the 2013 budget in recognition that areas of the arena need to be renovated and improved. The work under the study will take four to five months to complete. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing the Recreation Board to enter into an agreement with Crossroads Consulting Services to perform the Hobart Arena feasibility study at a cost not to exceed $75,000. As any work that would later be authorized from the study would be a part of a bond issue, and as bond rates are currently low, we do support emergency legislation so that the study can commence as soon as possible. Also, there are events scheduled for the arena in the next few weeks that the consultant can include in the study. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Clark, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as chair.
Does council have any questions on this report? Thank you. And finally, to wrap up the committee reports tonight, we have Mr. Doug Tremblay with the reports from the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President. This committee met on November 4th to consider a professional services agreement with EMH&amp;T of Columbus, Ohio, to design a water line project at a cost, at a cost not to exceed, I am assuming, $65,240. This particular line includes work on Barnhart Road, Oak Street, Frank Street, and Scott Street, and will include looping water lines for improved flow and increasing the size of some lines. This project is being designed concurrent with three other water line design projects in other areas and by other engineering firms. Those projects are within the purchase order authorization amount. The water line construction project will be part of a water fund bond project. This committee recommends that the legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with EHM&amp;T to design a water line project at not, at a cost not to exceed $65,240. We also support emergency legislation so that this design work under this agreement is not delayed, as the design will provide information necessary to the bond process to take advantage of current low interest rates. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Swazer, and myself.
Are there any questions from council on this report? You may continue, Mr. Tremblay.
Yes, Mr. President, I got another one here. The Utilities Committee met on November 4th also to consider an amendment to the professional services agreement with Arcatis U.S. Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, related to the construction management and programming work associated with the SCADA automation system of the wastewater treatment plant for an additional $35,000, for that total cost not to exceed $205,000. $35,000 is being saved on the construction portion of the project and can be allocated to the programming work at no additional project cost. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with the professional services agreement with Arcatis U.S. Incorporated, associated with the construction management and programming of the SCADA system for the wastewater treatment plant at a total cost not to exceed $205,000. So that this ongoing programming work is not delayed, we support emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Swazer, and myself.
Anyone on council have any questions on this report? Do you have anything further?
Nothing further, Madam President.
Thank you. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing council.
Buster Connor, 1210 South Glass Street. This has to do with the Hobart Arena. We've had to subsidize that place for many, many years. I think getting it for $75,000 looked at again is just throwing good money away again. It's almost outlived its time. We can't keep up with Nutter Center and places of that nature. We're too small, but we like small in Troy. We'd like to see Troy remain small. So, and I know it's up for emergency legislation, so I'm just up here keeping my lips from sticking together, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Robert Brimball, 160 Crestwood Drive, Staun Township. I'm here in opposition to the proposed rezoning of in-lots 9891 and 9892 for purposes of development. Wife and I are taxpayers in the East District. This will impact us. I'm a farm boy. I deplore the way pristine farmland is being destroyed in the county. I can't believe there aren't areas here in the city south of Troy or Bana that cannot be developed. My weekly travels take me up the Troy-Sidney to East Lockit, and the last week, there were 14 different heavy haulers in about a nine-mile area hauling south to Troy in the area for development purposes, further degrading Troy-Sidney Road, which I use a I am anti-development, or at the very least, very slow growth, and I think future generations will look back and say, if this is approved, what in the world were they thinking? Thank you.
Thank you. I will let you know that there is also a public hearing at our next meeting on December the 2nd on that topic. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments? Okay, we'll move on to resolutions, then, and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R-45, 2013.
Resolution number R-45, 2013. Resolution authorizing the Recreation Board of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Crossroads Consulting Services to provide the Hobart Arena feasibility study and declaring an emergency. This is at a cost not to exceed $75,000. This is budgeted, and this is the first reading.
Any questions from council on this resolution?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-46, 2013.
Resolution number R-46, 2013. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with EMH&amp;T to provide a water line design and declaring an emergency. This would be a water line project for areas of Barnhart Road, Oak Street, Frank Street, and Scott Street, cost not to exceed $65,240, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this resolution?
Move for suspension, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-47, 2013.
Resolution number R-47, 2013. Resolution approving the application of PNC Ventures LLC for assistance from the Downtown Building Repair Loan Program and declaring an emergency. This is a loan for $37,675, recommended by the Downtown Loan Committee, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this resolution?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer, okay, to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-48, 2013.
Resolution number R-48, 2013. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement, to the amendment, to the agreement with Arcatis U.S. Inc., for construction management and programming for the wastewater treatment plant SCADA system and declaring an emergency. This adds $35,000 to this professional services agreement for a total of $205,000, first reading.
Any comments from council on this resolution?
Move to suspend the rules. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-49, 2013.
Resolution number R-49, 2013. Resolution, sorry, preliminary resolution consenting to the Market Street Bridge Maintenance Project within the City of Troy, Ohio, by the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency. This is consenting to ODOT doing maintenance to the South Market Street Bridge in fiscal year 2016 at no cost to the city, first reading.
A quick question. Did you say South Market Street Bridge?
That's what I thought I heard I said.
Yes, I'm sorry. Be the North Market.
North Market Street?
Yes, sorry. North Market, yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
Sorry.
That's all right. Are there any questions from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Phillips to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O-22, 2013.
Ordinance number O-22, 2013. Ordinance vacating an unimproved public alley between West Ross Street and Southview Avenue, extending between Amelia Avenue and South Market Street in the City of Troy, Ohio. This had a public hearing this evening. This is the second reading. Has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, and I believe a committee meeting will be announced on this.
Yes, this will go to another reading. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-23, 2013.
Ordinance number O-23, 2013. Ordinance releasing mortgage lien for Stephen and Stacy Ruckhouse and declaring an emergency. This loan has been paid in full, so the mortgage lien should be released, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-24, 2013.
Ordinance number O-24, 2013. Ordinance repealing ordinance number O-28, 2011, and ordinance number O-31, 2012, establishing salaries of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This is related to the salaries and wages for part-time and seasonal employees. This will bring our initial hiring step into compliance with the Ohio Minimum Wage Law on January 1st, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Phillips, to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-25, 2013.
Ordinance number O-25, 2013. Ordinance subordinating a mortgage lien for Four Sons Development LLC and declaring an emergency. With this ordinance, the city would take a second position on a loan, but would still be adequately secured, first reading.
Any questions from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swayzer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Phillips to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read the final ordinance of the evening, O. 26, 2013.
Ordinance number O. 26, 2013. Ordinance changing the zoning of a portion of in-lot 9891 and all of in-lot 9892 in the City of Troy, Ohio from AR Agricultural Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. There will be a public hearing at the next meeting. First reading.
Okay, and this will go to another reading then. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Beemich, do you have any comments this evening?
Well, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple. One, many people have asked why some of us will wear red coats. It gives me a chance to mention to everybody, don't smile, that three city employees that have been hired from the city have been festival chairs. And around this arrangement, Mr. Swayzer, Mr. Kendall, myself have been chairs, and also in the audience, Mr. Cagley has been a Troy Strawberry Festival Chair. One of the things that they are charged to do is provide an activity for the clubs and organizations so that they can have monies to do community projects, and they've done an outstanding job in all those past years, and this is no exception. Kathy Roder received her jacket this evening, and so we were sure the very best as the kickoff in November for the Troy Strawberry Festival in '14 is already underway. I would also say that the tree was spared by the wind. It is still up, and that is a good thing. If you've driven by, it's a beautiful-looking shaped tree. The Christmas tree will be lighted on November 29th. We'll have our regular parade and the presentations on stage, and then we'll have our countdown to our Christmas tree lighting. Look forward to that, but it's still there and through the wind. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, any comments this evening?
Just a couple of brief announcements. Before our next council meeting, there's the Thanksgiving holiday on the 28th and the 29th, Thursday and Friday. Offices will be closed, so trash and recycling will be delayed by one day, starting on Thursday. So, Monday through Wednesday will be regular day. The Thursday will be then on Friday and Friday on Saturday. Let's see, that would put it to November 30th on Saturday, which is also the last day that the Dye Mill Facility will be open for the season.